I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, thank you so much for this great community that we live in. We come before you tonight asking for wisdom and guidance in our decision-making. We thank you for all those that serve and all those that we get to serve. Could you just name them?
All right, has anybody had an opportunity to look at the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
A motion is there? Second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. And we'll open it up to citizens' comments. If there are any citizens which would like to address the city council at this time, they'll be three minutes. You want to state your name, address, and where does he want to bring him forth? Do you want him to come up?
No, I think we're in the wrong place.
Are you guys looking for the call?
Yes.
Come on. What's the matter?
I'm a chip here.
Okay, sorry.
You're welcome to stay.
Well, if not, we'll close citizens' comments. Okay, we don't have any appointments, confirmations, or anything that you know of, factor? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion is there?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I guess we'll move on to this unfinished business thing.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is item G1. This is an ordinance for an island annexation. So, quick background, Bothman Company has submitted a petition for annexation on behalf of Paul Kelsey of Kicken Development for a tract of land located in the county at around 167th Street and 23rd slash Pawnee. This piece of land is proposed to be developed into duplexes on about 189 lots. This land is not abutting to corporate city limits of Goddard, which requires it to be annexed as an island annexation per KSA 12-520C. The city council reviewed the request on October 3, 2022, and per state law agreed to a resolution requesting findings of fact from the Board of County Commissioners, the B.O.C.C., determining if the tract of land was reasonable annexation. The B.O.C.C. met on November 2 at 9:00 a.m. and determined based on the facts presented to them that this request was reasonable and approved the request for annexation. The city council will now consider an ordinance for annexation which will become finalized after it is published in the city newspaper. So, just a review of the analysis, the city council has considered approving an ordinance annexing a tract of land into the corporate city limits as an island annexation. State law requires the three criteria below be met per KSA 12-520C. One, that the land must be located in same county. Owner must consent to or petition for annexation, which they have, the petition is included in the agenda. The B.O.C.C. must find that the annexation will not hinder or prevent proper growth and development of the area or of any other incorporated city located in the county. As a note, any land touching the island doesn't count as abutting and would have to be considered as another separate island annexation unless that land was touching the main corporate city limits. So, this is the land for the island annexation. As mentioned, as a note, if this land was to be petitioned to be incorporated into city limits, this would be considered a separate island annexation and you would have to go back to the B.O.C.C. and ask for that one, or this one, or this one, or this one, any of these. This one would be already touching the corporate city limits here, so this would just be considered abutting and it'd be just a traditional annexation. Small publication cost, legally it's proved as a form. It is recommended to the city council, both, one, waive the reading of the ordinance with voice, and, two, approve the island annexation ordinance with voice plus a roll call. But if there are any questions or comments about this, feel free to ask me and I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this side as well.
Okay, anybody have any questions for concerning the island annexation? No, I take a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Here, take a motion to approve the island annexation ordinance.
I'll make that motion as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second? Roll call?
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
That'll be ordinance number 905.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Arbor Creek, second, everybody?
Honorable Mayor and Council, this is a series of improvement petition resolutions that you see when we levy special assessments in accordance with the state statutes. The final plat for Arbor Creek was platted back in April of 2019. Phase two were, I'm sorry, this is the bond award, I apologize. April 19 with phase one authorized on May 6. The council approved the temp note series 2019-1 on November 26, 2019, with the issuance date in December of that year and maturing December 1 of this year. Phase two improvements were authorized June 21 of this year, I'm sorry, of 2021, including the respread agreement at the same meeting. Series 21-3 temp notes to finance phase two improvements were issued at the July 19, 2021 meeting, and those are dated August 3, 2021, with the maturation date of August 1 of 2014. At the September 19, 2022 regular city council meeting, the plat for the second addition and the replat for that affected portion of Arbor Creek Phase 2 was approved by the city council. The resolution accepts the petitions and authorizes the project issuance of notes. The petition authorizes construction of sanitary sewer improvements and in the event that all or in the event that all or part of the lots or parcels in the improvement district are replatted, or the ownership of a single lot is subdivided into two or more parcels, the assessment shall be calculated or recalculated. This is the the second addition. The resolution accepts the petition and authorizes the project issuance of temporary notes to construct the improvements for the future bond issuance under the special assessment statutes. The documents were reviewed by city attorney and authored by bond counsel. The recommended actions for item A1 is to accept the petition for improvements and adopt a resolution for grading improvements for Arbor Creek Phase 2 and Arbor Creek Second Edition. And that can be done by voice, followed by a waive the reading of the resolution and the adoption of the resolution. Are there any questions over phase two and grading? If not...
So, do we have a motion to accept the petition for improvements?
I'll make a motion to accept the petition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, roll call again.
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
And it'll be resolution number 2224.
This is the second resolution for this addition, which would be for paving. Again, the background remains unchanged. The improvement would construct pavement from Brookside Court to the east edge of Brookside Street to approximately 375 feet. Again, it's the same map as you saw previously. That petitioned amount authorization is for 808,000 with a pro rate of 1% per month. The cost of the improvements are assessed within the district. Lots 1 through 44, Block 1. Arbor Creek Second Editions shall pay 1/44th the total cost and then be apportioned equally upon the split. The resolution accepts the petitions and authorizes the project issuance of the temp notes to construct the improvements for the future bond issuance under the special assessment statutes, KSA 12-6A04. Again, the documents have been constructed and authored by Bond Counsel Kevin Cowan and reviewed by city attorney Ryan Pack who approves the form. Are there any questions over the paving? If not, it would be staff's recommendation to accept the petition for improvements and adopt the resolution making pavement improvements for Arbor Creek Addition, Second Phase, and Arbor Creek Second Edition.
Is there a motion to accept the petition?
Make a motion to accept the petition.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Take a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance for the resolution.
Second.
Motion is second? Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Take a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
And it will be for resolution 2225.
This resolution is for the paving collector for Phase 2 Arbor Creek and Arbor Creek Second Edition. Background remains the same. It's to construct pavement at Brookside from the north corner of Lot 43 to Block 10 to the south edge of West 23rd Street. Construction of sidewalk along the west side of Brookside and that the pavement will be constructed with plans and specifications furnished by the city engineer. You're authorizing an amount of 526,000 for the improvements with a pro rate of 1% per month from the date of the approval. Again, just in the staff comments, you can see the breakdown of lot blocks and how those are apportioned. 1/94. It's staff's recommendation to accept the petition for improvements and adopt the resolution for making pavement collector improvements for Arbor Creek Addition, Second Phase, and Arbor Creek Second Edition.
We have a motion to accept the petition for improvements and adopt the resolution.
I make a motion to accept the petition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second? Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Take a motion to waive the reading of the resolution.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Take the motion to adopt the resolution.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
It'll be resolution 22-25, or 26, I'm sorry.
Item H1D is the resolution for sanitary sewer improvements for Phase 2 Arbor Creek and Arbor Creek Second Edition. The improvements to construct sanitary sewer laterals and the petition amounts for 566,000 with the 1% pro rate of rate inflator. Again, those are proportioned by 1/144th for lots 1 through 44, Block 1. Arbor Creek Second Edition. As with the previous, the improvement districts paying 100% of the cost with zero paid by the city at large. It's staff's recommendation to accept the petition for improvements and adopt a resolution for improvements and to adopt a resolution making for sanitary sewer improvements to Arbor Creek Addition, Phase 2, and Arbor Creek Second Edition.
Make a motion to accept the petition.
Motion is second? Second, Michael, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Is there a second? Yeah, okay, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Roll call?
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
It'll be resolution 22-27.
Item H1E is a resolution for water mains improvements for Phase 2 Arbor Creek and Arbor Creek Second Edition. This is for water mains, pipes, valves, hydrants, and other appliances and the amount of 300,000 with the 1% inflator. The apportionment's the same lots 1 through 44, Block 1, Arbor Creek Second, 1/144th the total cost with 100% borne by the benefit district and zero by the city at large. The resolution accepts the petitions and authorizes the improvements under the special assessment statutes, KSA 12-6A04. And it's staff's recommendation to accept the petition for improvements and adopt the resolution.
Make a motion to accept the petition.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution.
Motion?
Second.
Motion is second? Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
It'll be resolution 22-28.
Item H1F is the resolution for the water collector improvements for Phase 2 Arbor Creek and Arbor Creek Second Edition. This is for additional water mains and the amount of 116,000 with the 1% inflator. This is apportioned with a portion of Arbor Creek Addition as well paying 1/194th, which is the same as lots 1 through 44 and Block A of the Second Edition. Again, 100% by the improvement district with zero by the city at large. It's staff's recommendation to accept the petition for improvements and adopt the resolution.
I'll make a motion to accept the petition.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution.
Second.
Motion is second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call?
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Zimmerman? Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
Resolution number 22-29.
Can I understand that you have a PowerPoint? At this time, I'll turn it over to Rodney Stevens, our developer.
Good evening, council, mayor, how are you all tonight? I feel good? Great? Just a little update for you all. This is the status of the source, I don't know if hopefully everybody's been out, the health club is open. That was just a couple nights ago, we got the photo of all 10 fields now. Obviously, the first fields are the ones that opened first, the baseball fields, the softball fields are part of Phase 2. Pretty exciting, it was a gorgeous shot at night, I think it was like Wednesday night, I think, or Thursday night? You can kind of see right there. These are the temporary fences that are in. That's what we used to have to put out for all the softball, but now these fields, we won't have to do that, so we can keep baseball going on these fields more often. Current status, health club is open and growing daily, very exciting there. Great just to get the facility open. Baseball had a great season, I don't know if you guys saw this weekend, it was kind of crazy out there, very busy. We had, I forgot, seven different states represented in the parking lot with, Scott always sends me pictures of the license tags. So, we had seven different states represented this weekend. That's going to be really exciting next year when everything, you know, those concessions and everything is completely open. Waterpark soft opening is planning to be at the end of this month and hopefully we might even make a soft opening, we won't announce it, we'll just do, you know, staff and maybe some citizens of Goddard and things like that during Thanksgiving break for just the water park. But grand opening sometime before Christmas on the water park. An auditorium is really almost the same exact, we'll probably phase it two weeks later. The second pool is just about done, the first pool did get done about 10 days ago. Second pool is being literally finished right now and then within probably seven to eight days, we'll be pouring up the pad around the entire pool. So, I think it's almost completely done, that's exciting as well. Scoreboards are going in and the starting blocks for the pool, it's kind of the last thing that we'll be doing in there. Hotel gave us a firm date of December 1. That's when they're turning over the hotel to, yeah, that's the people who will come in and install the furniture, the beds and tables and everything like that. Fourth floor is pretty much done, I don't know if you all have been able to tour it all, but the fourth floor and the third floor have all wallpaper in, all carpet in, all tile in, bathtubs in, showers and things like that, and that's on fourth and third, and then now we're moving down to second. And then the hotel will open, you know, first of the year. We'd love to make Christmas so, you know, that holiday week, that's our goal there. And preschool launches first class in January of this year. Preschool is done, it's just waiting for everything else to finish up. Phase 2, I think you guys have seen, this is just kind of, you know, one of the last drawings that we submitted. I think there's actually some little changes there, but this is the, you know, this whole white area is a deck basically that overlooks the baseball, I mean, the sand volleyball sports. Right here, this is showing configured as volleyball, this is, we have a configuration where this will be soccer, this will be, I don't know if you guys have seen sand tennis now as well. So, there's a lot of cool sports that we'll be able to do here in sand, we're going to be doing a lot of different programming for them. We're showing six outdoor pickleball courts and five indoor pickleball courts. This is pretty much done, I mean, we, I know you all have the drawings somewhere and I think we're super close. Harland is finishing the last part of the civil. And then that's just kind of an aerial to show, that was an early one, just to kind of show you the difference, the viewing things outside. Today I'm here, Phase 2 is approved with the understanding that Phase 2 would be treated similarly to Phase 1, such that it would be eligible for real property tax abatement. This is consistent with the fact that the various portions of Phase 1 and Phase 2 are related to signing brand customers to Goddard. However, there was an oversight by the attorneys and the actual real property tax abatement language was left out of the development agreement. We're here today asking for the project to be formally granted for real property tax abatement via the issuance of IRBs on the property for Phase 2. And of course, I'm here for any questions you all might have.
Do you happen to have the wording from the Phase 1 on what we did with that?
I'm sure your staff has that. Kevin probably has that. Or you guys, you guys probably have that.
What are we looking for?
The wording from the original, from the Phase 1 that was left out of the Phase 2.
I don't know if there was ever any discussion with regard to putting language in the agreement for Phase 2. I think it was, at least from our perspective, it was always our understanding that it would come back at the time of Phase 2 to make a request at that time.
Right.
So, I'm not, I'm not sure what oversight Mr. Stevens is referring to.
Okay, so in the original Phase 1...
That's the first I heard of that, today when my attorney called, that was worded me, basically they wrote that, so, and I think...
I think it was Paul Chris Nellie that wrote that.
Didn't you talk to Chris today?
No.
That was, that was Ryan who's stuck in traffic behind an accident on Kella.
Yeah, Kevin's on his way out. But I think it was a big accident that shut down Kella. He's stuck in that right now. He may have talked to Chris today. I didn't, I was in court today.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yeah, Chris called me and told me that Kevin talked to him this afternoon and that's that was what they told me.
So, I don't know, I mean, Kevin has been handling a lot of the conversations with regard to the finance issues because it's his wheelhouse.
And the IRBs allow for the continuation, which, if you remember, we extended that to 65 million, I want to say, off the top of my head. And that also extended the sales tax abatement for the, for the construction and items that are within that district itself. But as far as the property tax abatements, I know we brought that forward when we were starting the discussion on the pilot agreement because the city knew that to complete the pilot agreement, we had to have that understanding what framework was to be taxable versus non-taxable. And so, in order to clarify any ambiguities and uncertainties, that's why it was addressed at that time.
Well, knowing all the concerns was that things still haven't been planned, so we don't know which parcels are going to be abated, which ones aren't. So, I've asked Ryan if he could help explain that to us, so Ryan, if he could help, council.
Well, I mean, the purpose of the plan, I mean, the plan is just a map that shows how a property is subdivided into smaller parcels. It shows how it's divided up, it shows where property lines are located, it shows dimensions, it shows easements, public right of way, things like that. In this particular case, the plat is important because there are certain components of the project that are going to be abated for property tax purposes. There are other components that cannot be and won't be abated for property tax purposes. And so, the Sedgwick County Appraiser is the official who is responsible for looking at a property and determining its official appraised value, and that's where the property taxes come from. And I know when this issue first came up, I believe Kevin and and Chris Ariano, Mr. Stevens' attorney, talked about it, you know, we shared our concern that, you know, we need to divide Phase 1, the main facility that consists of And I know when this issue first came up, I believe Kevin and Chris Ariano, Mr. Stevens' attorney, talked about it, you know, we shared our concern that, you know, we need to divide Phase One, the main facility that consists of the auditorium, the waterpark, the health club, the childcare facility. We need to divide that up into multiple tax parcels for tax purposes, because that's what gives the appraiser the direction as to what to appraise. And from our perspective, what we need is something that segregates the components that are not going to be subject to tax from the components that will be subject to tax, just so that the appraiser knows what to appraise when that's what happens. So that's, that's our concern. I know that Chris had shared his expertise and his request that, you know, they don't want to carve it up into as many pieces as what we were suggesting to them. We understood, we, we shared our concern. Kevin, I believe, called the appraiser's office to see if there's any way to do it without carving up the property. The appraiser agreed to take it under advisement, thought about it some, called back and said, no, I, I just, he didn't see any way to do it without carving it up the way we were suggesting. And so, I believe the parties are still working on trying to finalize that. I think one of the last issues was trying to determine how to allocate the parking to the various different parcels in the project. And I know that, I think Brian and Mike had made a proposal as to how to allocate that, I'm not quite sure where that stands, or if there were any other issues. It was approximately five hundred parking stalls out of that that would be kind of considered common area. And, and so, you know, for the purposes of Mr. Stevens' requests today, you know, it's, it's my recommendation that whatever the governing body decides to do, that you do it subject to finalizing a plat, identifying the parcels with parcel identification numbers or PIN numbers individually for each Phase One and Phase Two parcel, receiving that property tax abatement in accordance with the development agreement, and to mutually agree upon pilot agreement to be presented at the December fifth meeting. That would give us time to complete all the necessary IRB documents at the last meeting in December. So if you decide to do something, that would be my recommended caveat for that. Otherwise, if there were no abatements, it could be just one large parcel, but with the abatements, there needs to be a delineation.
Rodney, I don't think you're waiting on us, though, for that plat, I know, as you mentioned, it's gone back and forth numerous times, I think, we've been engaged daily on it.
We've approved the final plat, which is up there, however, it needs, by final plat, the planning commission has approved the final plat. And in the absence of understanding what additional abatements might occur specifically with respect to Parcell Seven and Eight, which are those, those two parcels down in the lower left-hand corner, if there are any abatements there, that could be problematic simply because of the statutory exclusion for retail establishments receiving a property tax abatement. So that, that area there might need to be further divided with, with the PIN in there itself, but we were told to essentially hold off on the consideration of the plat until everyone understood what was going to happen specifically with Phase Two.
So what's the new compensation we would like to go with, what recommendation the attorney uses?
Is it a full abate, 100% abatement for ten years, I assume, or what was the abatement? We've previously done abatements as 100%, or we've done them stair-step where it's like 100% for two years, 80% for two additional years, and 60% for... What are you asking for?
100% for ten years, just like Phase One. That's, that was our understanding, I had no idea until literally this week that this was up for discussion. I mean, if it's changes, we might not, you know, we don't, I don't know what we'll do with the rest of Phase Two. That's where we thought this was this whole time, I don't know why it's been gray or whatever, I guess. Sorry for the communication, it wasn't...
Personally, I think we need to clarify what's going to be taxable and what's not, because otherwise, we just have no idea until...
Well, I think we're ninety, we've been ninety-five, ninety-nine percent, it's, it's already in the documents what's taxable and what's not. We all know what's taxable and what's not, I think the only debate was maybe how much parking is going to be for the auditorium slash waterpark versus the taxable issues, which would be the hotel, which we know exactly how much parking the hotel needs, we know exactly how much parking the health club needs, so, and in the preschool, which is very, very little parking. So the three taxable entities, never mind, it would be health club, would be hotel, and would be preschool.
And because of the proximity and how everything is, not just in this development, but in other similar type developments, we erred on the side of essentially common use. And staff's recommendation would be that for those 500 spots, that there's going to be overlap, so we erred on the side of not squabbling over parking spaces at that point. So I think we ended up providing less than a dozen over what that initial request was, but the 500 is, is kind of where we're at.
On Phase One, the two components that we agreed to abate were the auditorium, and then the ball fields, and then the common areas.
And I can read, I have Section 306.
But I, but I think what Mr. Stevens is here today to do is to ask for a similar abatement with regard to the Phase Two part of the project. And the, the sports bar is not eligible for abate. Even if we wanted to do it, we can't do it under Kansas law. The rest of the components, I believe, are eligible for abatement, provided that's what you all want to do.
Yeah, I guess I have a question on the finances, because it was drawn up a certain way, whether it was, I mean, I guess regardless of how it got there, how much does that affect the, affect the project or the city financially, Matt, or since Kevin's not here, or can you speak to how it affects it financially?
No, I, I don't have those calculations.
Well, we, first of all, we know that, that we have, we issued, you know, 1.5 million plus prior to Mr. Stevens taking the project over. We instructed, we constructed the interior roadways and the water, storm water, and rudimentary storm water, and sanitary sewer mains at the public expense, which was encouraged by the Department of Commerce for a local spin in the game. With that being said, you know, those obligations, we're now paying, and we'll pay until 2022, and we're averaging ballpark $50,000, $55,000 a year in payments for, for that infrastructure and the one thing that's in there now.
The G O bond?
Yes.
Yep.
And that would be the Series 2020 dash two general obligation.
So you're, you're saying we have already a million and a half in the game?
Correct, and the intent always was to, to structure that in a TIF-like manner, meaning the property taxes from within the benefiting district would cash flow the improvements. And so, you know, anything which, so long as we're getting a pilot and the base property taxes, we're able to cash flow that. In the absence of that, then the public at large would have to pay, meaning we're raising property taxes to cash flow that debt issuance.
Would cash flow them now?
Yes, they would.
Now, without, without any other development going on, would they cash flow them now?
Correct. And then with Phase Two at build-out with the, with the restaurant, that would obviously assist in, in that payment structure. But the hotel and the health club and the childcare facility certainly carry that, that principal and interest payment that we have obligated for the improvement.
Including Phase Two already, including what?
No, that's not, that's not including Phase Two.
Oh, okay.
So Phase One property taxes are cash flowing G O bonds?
With, again, we have yet to see everything come online, and so we're only dealing with partial assessments at this time. So it's, it's difficult to say, but with the ball fields and, okay, with the hotel and the health club, we should cash flow those payments from property taxes. With respect to the additional restaurant, that should also assist in doing so.
Just, it's coming over on top.
Yes.
Yeah, so this, this is an addition of extra property taxes, you guys are getting it, you are not getting. This is new. Now, I was able to do, according to Starbond documents that we had in there, there was going to be a concession type...
Locker room area.
Locker room area. I'm basically foregoing all of that, because I could have that all exempt, at least that's what we thought, but I'm foregoing all of that by doing this extra part facility here, so this is all now would not be exempt, obviously. This is all part of the Starbonds here.
Okay.
So Rodney, you're asking to be abated as the ball fields and then the soccer, or the, the sand sports facility?
Basically yellow, yes, sir.
Okay.
Everything besides the purple and the blue.
And that parking to the north as well.
Okay.
And the parking to the north would be exempt as well.
Yes, and the parking, yeah.
What's the green stuff?
That's outside, like...
Or the, no, the little, in between the yellow and the pink, or...
This right here?
Yeah. Shuffleboard?
No, the bag.
Bachi ball?
Your game card.
Oh, your game card.
Yeah, your game card. Bouche? Cornhole. Cornhole, what's the other one, bouche?
Bachi ball?
Bachi ball, bachi ball.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's kind of relevant but irrelevant. So the ten-year tax abatement on Phase One, has that started on the fields but not on the auditorium?
None of it has, has been undertaken at this point, because there's no parcel identifying numbers that would, because...
Well, I've been paying properly.
He's paid two years with the property taxes.
Okay, but then when it gets established, okay, gotcha.
But it's like, I mean, it's significant, because just this 2022's payments were about a 90-plus percent increase over what was previously there, so. And then it'll come, once everything's fully online, we're still a good two years out before we'll know what the actual tax will...
Be pretty huge, actually, yeah.
Rodney, do you know what the rough estimate of taxes is that you're willing to get abated on the purple and the blue?
Purple and blue will pay tax.
He wants just the yellow abated.
The yellow and the green.
The dollar amount that we are, or you're wanting to be abated, what's that dollar amount?
Super little, because, I mean, there's no value here, you know, the value's in the infrastructure, really.
Right.
This is all site work, now the parking lot will be, you know, I mean, all this takes a lot of parking, you have sixteen teams, you know, and then sixteen teams waiting, five, six people a team, you know, so you have to have a lot of parking for it. You know, I don't have a thought.
Well, I guess part of my understanding is that until that all is hammered out as far as the plating, then we are sort of stuck with not knowing what right-of-ways we have and things like that, isn't that right?
I, I, I believe that we should be able to have all of this tidied up based upon our discussion here this evening and present it back to you by December fifth.
I mean, we need, we need to get the plat done, because that makes it clear as to what, what parcels, what lots we are abating. But certainly in the original development agreement with regard to Phase One, the property wasn't platted at that time. We just had to be a little bit more specific about those components of the property that were going to be subject to abatement and those components that were not. And so, and that's where we're trying to hammer that out with regard to the plat. So, I mean, we do need to get that plat done sooner rather than later, and that will make it really easy.
So is there some way we can get that done, Rodney, to where we can do that on the December meeting?
We will give it a strong effort.
We'll, yeah, we'll, we'll have a special meeting for the planning commission in order to do that, but we'll make it happen.
So Kevin, can I ask you, now that you're here?
I was here.
Okay, so I, now I feel like I better understand, because I didn't, honestly, I didn't frankly understand the whole ask for the intro, but, but Kevin, if we, if we go ahead and abate for these courts in yellow, is, would that put the bond issuance or cash flow at risk, or do you have any way of even counting, like?
I, I don't think so, and I'll defer to what Brian mentioned a moment ago, I mean, that was all part of the analysis when the city committed to some of the additional funding, but that was pre-Phase Two, so Rodney mentioned this, this is all sort of on top of what was considered then. So I'd be optimistic about that, this is all in addition to the things that were considered at that time. The other thing I'll mention, and it's not your question, but I was thinking of it, these things aren't complete yet, and so, we're probably not talking about including these parts in the bond issue that we're trying to get done this year, it's really just Phase One plus the completed ball fields. But a lot of this is just working through and having certainty that this is the agreement going forward. We'll have the parcels designated, so whenever this Phase Two or these items get complete, that the necessary IRB issue to accomplish that abatement will be pretty simple and clean, and so that's, that's part of what's going on as well, just trying to get things done for Phase One, plus the ball fields that were part of Phase Two, and then making determinations about these others.
And just to kind of go back and review what the original intention purposes of the Starbond statutes were, was to essentially provide a funding mechanism for attractions that are otherwise, they're profitable once they're operating, but they're really not profitable with the construction overhead. And so, when you're looking at, you know, the turf, there's a reason why it's mainly municipalities that do that, even for, for large professional organizations, because once you add that construction cost in there, it's generally prohibitive, and, and the whole intention is to bring in outside dollars to Goddard, and to get folks spending their money here, and also to allow us to market our community to the outside world in an enjoyable, you know, our, our, our motto is, you know, a destination for a family-oriented active lifestyle, and this, this development certainly is, is, you know, attributable to that. And so, you know, that was why the initial discussions with the abatements were for the publicly financed facilities, meaning that the auditorium and the ball fields, and so, obviously, we understood that those facilities had parking and whatnot, and so, that's why going ahead and picking that up in addition to the fact that there is a half-cent transportation development district tax that can go in place there, that, that'll help offset both the interior and connector roadways, as well as the parking and whatnot down the road, once it's time to, to keep the facility looking first class, so. We kind of forget why Starbonds were started and why, why do we have what we have here in Goddard with that.
Appreciate that.
Is it pretty run-of-the-mill with Starbonds to issue property tax abatements, or?
Run-of-the-mill, not sure about that, but it is fairly typical. Sometimes with property tax, certainly for the sales tax exemption, that's been part of it, so more usual than unusual.
I mean, we've, we've issued tax abatements to things like the other states to try to help them get off the ground and...
And senior housing, the medical lodge.
Senior housing is part of it, so it's nothing that we haven't done before. Senior housing is part of it, so it's nothing that we haven't done before. But it's just, the only thing I'm concerned with is making it a clean deal to where we know what's abated and what's not. And that's the only way we can do it is by making sure the plating is all done and going out and ready to go.
I really think Kevin said it super well. I mean, I don't think you're voting on what's not going to be taxed by the Starbond and what is in the future. I, I, I would hope we could get that done today because phase two, we're talking about property tax exemption on the things that Starbond did not cover, which is, you know, these items. You're going to be, like he says, you're getting extra product tax that we weren't even thinking we were getting. So I mean, it's, you were already cash flowing well before, and now it's just, this is all what do you call icing on the cake? And it's, it's a little risky for us, just to be honest. I mean, we're betting on people coming out here to, to do all these activities, you know? We're running out on limb, for sure, on this area. Nobody could really debate that, that we're not going out on limb with this project on that part, for sure. I'm a little nervous.
Yeah, and, you know, in all fairness, from what I saw from the beginning, it seems like that's, there's a lot more to that, way more to that than you were initially throwing on phase two than what I've seen.
I've got sucked in out here a little bit. I want it to be amazing, you know, so I.
You gonna move into seasons for this?
What's that?
You gonna move into season for this?
It seems like I'm here this much. I'm covered more than home, for sure.
I mean, I'm generally, I think I'm generally comfortable with that, understanding it's not like all of it, it's the, it's the squirts.
There'll be an agreement to let, you know, let, let pass as long as we can get this, the rest of this hammered out in the near future as far as the plating of everything to know where everything's going.
So if you guys decide that you want to do something on this, on the screen, we laid out four op, not four, I mean, there are more things that you could do, but the four primary options we would have would be, obviously, to deny the request. You could abate the ball fields and the associated parking. You could, number three, I think, is what Rodney is asking for and is consistent with what you all did with phase one, which is to abate the Starbond financed facilities to include the second set of ball fields and the sand sports complex and the parking associated with that. And then number four, as I understand it, Rodney's not asking for abatement of any of the other facilities, the pickleball or anything like that, so. That's correct. Up to you guys, what, what you want to do, I mean.
I, I'm on board with option three since it's pretty much consistent with what we did in phase one or what was done in phase one, I should say.
So how does that play into?
No, that's not a motion, I'm just.
How does that play into what the county is wanting us to do?
Does the county is wanting us to? With, with respect to the PIN numbers for identifying. Well, we're going to get the plat down. Right. And so that's why the, the motion would be to agree to, in this case, approving the property tax abatement for the Starbond financed facilities to include phase two ball fields and sand sports complex and parking spaces for those facilities, subject to finalizing a plat, identifying the parcel identification number, PIN numbers individually for each phase one and phase two parcels receiving a property tax abatement in accordance with the development agreement and a mutually agreed upon pilot agreement, both to be presented to the city council at the December fifth, twenty twenty-two regular city council meeting.
So which one is that, one, three or four?
Three.
Number three, sir.
I propose, I make a motion to number three, all that. I go.
Pass muster.
Elements, I know.
So you're making a motion for number three, subject to the conditions of finalizing the plat and all that other stuff?
Yeah.
The motion is stated. And directing us to come back at the December fifth meeting in order to finalize all that.
Yeah, we have a motion, and is there a second? And Brett is going to sit out on this, so.
Oh, I'll, I'll second that. I'm, I'm comfortable with that. It's in the spirit of what phase one was.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Mr. Council. Relax.
Is this ready?
Okay, great. Really fantastic.
This is the series twenty-two dash oh one general obligation bond sale. This item is the first of three, so we won't be structured kind of like the last agenda item, H one, where we had all of the background and all of that. I, I've condensed this a little more to where what you'll have is an initial background with an analysis for the three components that you have here. The first being the awarding of the bids, the second being the ordinance, which is providing for the issuance of the bonds and the collection of property taxes and pledging the city's full faith and credit in levying those taxes, as well as the third and final item, which is the resolution approving the form and details and authorizing the sell and delivery of those bonds. The city authorized the improvements to the following residential additions by the property owner petition under the provisions of K S A twelve dash six A oh one at SEC, which is the special assessment statute, and that's what we've used for the entirety of Goddard's modern contemporary growth. The documents will convert the temporary notes with these general obligation bonds. The assessment proceedings for Arbor Creek Edition Phase One and Collector Cloverleaf Farms Edition Phase One and Elk Ridge Phase Three at the September nineteenth meeting upon the conclusion of a public hearing that approved the statement of final costs at that meeting. At the same meeting, resolution twenty-two dash twenty, offering the sale of the series twenty-two dash one bonds, totaling six million, three hundred and ten thousand were issued or were approved. The terms of the notes would be from twenty twenty-four to twenty forty-three, beginning in April first, with payments being made April first and October first of the calendar year. The bond sell principal amount, again, would be six point six two million. The twenty-two dash one issuance would be redeemable on a date agreed upon by the issuer, so meaning down the road that could be called. The bonds would be delivered on or about December first of twenty twenty-two with the general obligation temporary notes twenty nineteen dash one dated December eighteenth, twenty nineteen, and maturing on December first, twenty twenty-two, would be retired with the issuance. This is Form B on your resolution, I'm sorry, on the bid award, which shows the, the number of bidders that were received. And we have Brett Shogren of Stiefel and our bond attorney, Kevin Cowan, here to answer questions that you might have upon the bid process. The column on the left, Piper Sandler and Company, is the best bid with a total interest cost or true interest cost of just, just under four point two million. The city received the bids at ten, with the best bid being Piper Sandler and Company, with the total cost being three point five million, with a premium of thirty-six. So essentially what we do is, is they bid a true cost plus this premium amount to get you a net interest cost, which is the three point four million. And that comes out to a true interest rate of four point one seven eight five oh two. Again, this is what we've done for all the other subdivisions. The documents were drafted by bond attorney Kevin Cowan of Gilmore and Bell and have been reviewed by the city attorney, city staff, and Brett Shogren of Stiefel Nichols. It's recommended that the city council review and consider the presentation of bids, with the best bid being presented as Piper Sandler and Company and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the bid form selling the bonds to the best bidder on the basis of the bid in terms specified in the notice of bond sell, which is included in your staff report. And that can be done with a voice vote. Sarah? Councilmember Leland, would you like to make that motion?
No.
I can't read. You're not going to make a motion? Oh, whatever, whatever he says.
I'm over here reading.
Is that a motion, Brett?
No. I was waiting for Sarah to make it.
Nobody wants to make a motion.
Take the motion to accept the bid.
Yes, I make a.
Thank you.
There you go.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion? Voice vote?
It's a voice vote.
Oops.
Yes or no? No roll call on this one. Now, the next two, we will have roll calls.
Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, this is H three B, which is the ordinance authorizing the levying of the special assessments for the bond payments for Arbor Creek Edition Phase One and Collector and Cloverleaf Farms Edition Phase One and Elk Ridge Edition Phase Three. This authorizes the sale of the bonds and the levying of the special assessments. This is done in accordance with resolution twenty-two dash twenty, which is exhibit H point three B dot B in your agenda packet, and that essentially defined and authorizes the terms of the sale with the bonds going to retire temporary note series twenty nineteen dash one. Again, what we've done for all of our other subdivisions with the documents being drafted by bond council Kevin Cowan and reviewed by city attorney Brian Peck and utilizing the costs identified with Brett Shogren of Stiefel Nichols. It's recommended that the city council adopt the proposed ordinance as presented by waiving the reading of the ordinance, followed by a roll call vote on the adoption.
I, I will motion we waive the reading of the ordinance. Second.
Motion to the second. Any discussion? Call in favor, aye?
Aye. I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion to the second, any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Zellman?
Yes.
Councilmember Traylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
It'll be ordinance number nine oh six.
Motion passed.
And this is the third and final step in the process, which is the resolution prescribing the form and details authorizing the sell and delivery, ongoing compliance with the issuance of the bonds. And the resolution provides the terms and details of the bonds and authorizes the mayor and staff to take the necessary steps to complete the transaction as set forth in the resolution, bond transcript, and compliance with the annual reporting and disclosure requirements. Again, with the payments being made on April first and October first, beginning next year, and October first of twenty twenty-three, retiring temp note series twenty nineteen dash one and authorizing the mayor and staff to sign the necessary bond certificates and ongoing disclosures. Again, this is identical to what we've done for other subdivisions, with the documents being drafted by our bond attorney, Kevin Cowan, reviewed by city attorney Ryan Peck, and identifying the assessments and costs by our financial advisor Brett Shogren of Stiefel Nichols. The process presented for the assessments is, I went backwards, sorry. It's recommended that the city council adopt a proposed resolution as presented by waiving the reading of the resolution and adopting the resolution.
I make a motion we waive the reading of the resolution.
Second.
Motion to the second. Discussion? Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion to the second, any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Zellman?
Yes.
Councilmember Traylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
And it'll be resolution twenty-two thirty.
Good evening, council, mayor. Thank you guys for having me tonight. My name is Kate Morgan. I am a Goddard Public Library Board member and the head of the Strategic Planning Committee this year. So we are up to redo our strategic plan for the next five years, and we have decided to do only a year. I haven't used one of these in a really long time, so hopefully I know what I'm doing. We're going to be doing just a one single year twenty twenty-three strategic plan. I'm going to go into a little bit detail about whatever we're doing that. But I do want to highlight a few things that we have on the agenda to work on. We would like to work on new location signs, self checkout technology. I, so many libraries have them and we do not. Again, we're going to talk about staffing here a little bit, would be one thing that would really help out our staff. We'd like to grow our Friends and Foundation Board. We're working with Goddard High School Theater to do elves for Christmas on Main Street. All computers, so if you've been to a kids' area in a library, they have specialized computers for kids to use. They're safer, they're a little bit more user friendly, they're touchscreens. Goddard does not have that. We're going to talk about how booming our children's programming is here in a minute and how, what a wonderful addition that will be. So we're going to be working towards that. Partnering with Goddard High School and Eisenhower High School for doing some video promotions for the library. Music Garden in the Pocket Park, Music Gardens are really popular. I know Clark Davidson Elementary is getting ready to put one in. Just a wonderful way to engage our community and, again, get people over by the library. Permanent Storywalk on the Trail is in development, we're talking about that as well. We currently do not have video conferencing ability in our fishbowl, which is kind of like our small, little enclosed conference room. So that's one thing we're hoping to work on, being able to provide. A lot of more people are working from home or needing to be able to get together for group conferencing. So this would be something we'd like to have. Our flooring is truly atrocious. We definitely need new flooring. The carpet is ripping, it's a hazard. We're going to talk a little bit about our space in a second, but that's something that, whatever happens with our building, needs new flooring. And then our bathrooms look also truly horrific. If you've never been over there, I would highly, we would welcome you to come see, take a look at the facilities. It's actually really embarrassing to see how terrible our bathrooms are. So that's something that we would like to work on. So our limitations to a growing, thriving community library are very real for us right now. So our biggest one is space. This is a picture of our storytimes currently. We're averaging anywhere from thirty to sixty people coming on Monday mornings for storytime. And we have so many little kids and we have so many people who are coming. And I'm a mom of three. When I moved here five years ago, we moved back, my husband grew up here in Goddard, and I went to our storytime and there was one person and there were three kids, and it was truly horrible. I was appalled at the lack of children's program that we had at that time. Fast forward to where we are today, this is incredible. This is truly incredible that we have people coming. I used to drive to Dorby to go to the library there because their children's area was phenomenal. I'd go to Chick-fil-A, I'd go to Target, I would go to the park, I would spend money. People do that now. They come to Goddard, they come to our storytimes, they go to Jojo's, they walk down and they go to the splash pad. We have people that are going to Walmart because they're coming in from maybe Garden Plain or from the, from the country. So we definitely are seeing, this is a huge motivator to get people into our community is our children's programming. So we really would like to see space happening. And I'm bringing this up because I know that we're in talks about doing a community center library. And we very much want to be a part of that conversation and be a part of helping make this happen for Goddard. We both need the community center and we need a new library space. And so this is something that just highlights that very much. We also have a lack of coworking areas. Like I said, we have a lot more people that are doing the work from home, self-employed, needing a space where they can meet and gather safely. So it's something that we'd like to be able to provide. And again, that's severely limited children's area. I cannot tell you, they do amazing with the tiny little area that we have. But it is, as a mom of, again, of young kids, it's just, you get a few, few kids back there and it's completely overrun and there's nowhere else. You can't name any more kids back there. The other thing I want to highlight is our budget. Our staff is vastly underpaid at nine fifty an hour. That does go up after three months to ten dollars an hour. I mean, three months, yes, ninety days. So our challenge currently is, is we cannot hire and retain excellent staff. We are not competitive with today's job force and what people are providing. We thankfully have some amazing staff who are committed to literacy and they're committed to serving in their community. And so they're willing to take that pay cut, but it's also hard to hire people who know what they're doing with technology. So that is definitely a concern. So that is definitely a concern. And then last but not least, we're unable to expand to provide community-requested services. We have a large influx of people in the community requesting services from a library that we are starting to have to deny and say we don't have the staff or the budget or the resources to do this. We don't have the space to hold bigger events. We're having to go use the community center, which we know has its own issues. And people don't want to go to a library program at the community center. They wanna do it at the library and then go check out books and go use some of those other services. So our big concern is that moving forward... This is why I'm doing a one-year strategic plan this year. We're waiting to see what happens with the new community center library proposals. We want to do more, we want to grow, but we're pretty much facing a wall with our current budget and with our current space. So we're excited with what we're doing. I'm very, very proud of April and her team and what they've been able to accomplish in the five years since I've moved here. The night and day difference that they have done to our library is just incredible. And we tell them that all the time, but we would love to give them a better pay. We would love to give them more space and more staff to be able to better serve our community. Any... I have one more picture. Did I? I already forgot. Oh, I forgot our stats. You should have in front of you, and this is just to kinda highlight our services. It's probably in your... On your computers. This is my first time here. Thanks for bearing with me. So we have a nice little... What do I call this? My brain tonight. Spreadsheet, thank you. A nice little spreadsheet here that shows you our consortium, which is a consortium of communities that have all pulled together library resources. So Goddard is currently the second smallest out of the eight libraries by population. We are the third in per capita checkouts from January to August of this year. So again, we're the second smallest, but we're the third in per capita, which means of our population, we're currently checking out 6.4 physical items per person in our community. We're fourth in total checkouts from January to August. And then the top two libraries in our consortium are five times the size and over twice as big. Their communities are over twice as big as Goddard, with at least twice the staff number that we have. So those are just some of the stats. So again, our staff is small and they are mighty, and they are doing incredible work, but I am definitely concerned we are going to burn them out and we are going to no longer be able to provide the resources that our community is seeing. And one last little stat, our summer reading program in 2019 was at 300 signups. This year it was 900. If that increases as it has been next summer, I don't think our staff can mentally, emotionally, physically handle that. I think it's gonna be pretty exhausting for them. And so those are just some concerns that we have. And yeah, any questions? One more sign? See, this is why April's here. Yes. So the future is we're worried about staff retention, decreased quality of services due to overwhelm, and that our current growth is going to outpace our budget and resources, which diminishes the way we serve our community, which we want to do very well, and we are doing well. But, okay, any questions?
Anybody have questions? I'll raise a question.
Thank you for your time today.
Honorable Mayor and City Council. This is item H.25. This is the Ben Healy Annexation. So, quick background, Botten Company has submitted a petition for annexation on behalf of Ben Healy for a tract of land located on... In the county, excuse me, in general, located around 183rd Street, south of US 54 and north of the trail. The land is proposed to be developed into a mixed-use development through the Plan Unit Development PUD zoning classification. This land is abutting the corporate city limits of Goddard, which allows the city to annex it through the petition process per KSA 12-520A. The City Council will now consider it an ordinance for annexation, which will become finalized after it's published in the city newspaper. So this is H.25 analysis. The City Council is considering approving an ordinance annexing a tract of land into the corporate city limits. State law allows specific annexations under certain circumstances per KSA 12-520A. They're listed here. Seven is the one we're going with. The land joins the city in a writ petition for or consent to annexation as filed with the city by the owner. So this is... We've got a petition for annexation, and it is already abutting the city corporate limits, so we don't have to go through the island annexation process. It's just annex it if you want to annex it, and then we just simply notify the county. So here's the property. This dash in orange is our current city limits right now. Green is sewer lines, water is water lines... Excuse me, blue is water lines, and then white are the parcels. And the streets are listed here, and then this dash is... These dashed orange, yellow lines right here is the Healy Development. Two separate lots. You have 47.95 and then 4.93 over here, so around 53 acres.
If we take that in, do we have to immediately provide water and sewer to that farm instead of them?
That farm doesn't even go away. The developer who bought this land over here, he's gonna go through the Plan Unit Development, which would be just like any other development, which would be petitions for improvements, for lateral lines, sewer lines, et cetera, streets and anything else of that nature. Any rezonies would have to go through the Planning Commission and then come to the City Council for final approval, just like any other type of development. Small publication cost. Legally, it's approved as a form. It is recommended the City Council, both, one, waive the reading of the ordinance, and then, two, approve the annexation ordinance. But I am open to questions, comments?
Do they give it an indication of what they're putting in there?
Yes, they have. And the developer wants to remain anonymous about what he's proposing, but I can't say it's a PUD, it's a Plan Unit Development. He wants to do a mix of commercial and residential, but he wants to keep it off the books until it actually comes before Planning Commission and City Council, because IDF that is the ruling, so...
There's a possibility of being commercial and residential?
Mm-hmm. Yes, that's what he's intending to do, but he wants to keep some of the proposed uses off the record until he can no longer keep it off the record, which what's gonna happen is during the PUD process, they have to propose a concept idea, which goes before Planning Commission and City Council, kinda like a rezoning process. And that concept image is kinda gonna let the cat out of the bag, so to speak, and he knows that once that happens, it's open to anybody and all discussions are open at that point. So, but at this time, he wants to kinda keep it off the record, but I can't tell you it's a mix of uses.
Just one more.
Do you want to waive the reading of the ordinance?
I'll motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
For a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. Waive the reading. Any discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote. I take a motion to approve the annex ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the annexation ordinance. I'll second it.
Motion second. Any discussion? All favor, roll call, I guess.
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmembers Zeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Traylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
It'll be ordinance 907.
Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor and City Council. Item 86 is a bulk water meter purchase. As you all know, in the coming months, the city of Goddard is expected to experience significant growth. The various subdivisions already approved by council include nearly 1,100 new water service connections. Each connection requires installation of a new meter. Meter requests are increasing daily, requiring multiple installations. Today, we installed 32 meters in October. So it's picking up. We only installed about 40 meters the prior quarter. So it's picking up quite a bit. Currently, water meter purchases are made and lots of 20 meters and 20-meter antennas on an as-needed basis. The high construction volume as required, as I said before, is 120 meters per week. The lagging supply line can delay their delivery, impacting our ability to meet the construction needs. To avoid that situation where a meter is unavailable when we need it, we would like authority to purchase 300 Camstrip 2100 Flow IQ water meters and 300 antennas to go with them. That is the water meter that we use all around town. It's a 5/8 3/4 inch standard water meter. After the purchase is made, the meter inventory will be replenished based on current inventory and the number of active building permits. Replenishment orders will contain approximately 20 meters, 20 antennas per order. We won't let our big stock get too low because when we start getting the subdivisions with the duplexes, it's likely we'll have, you know, anywhere from 40 to 60 meters at a time that'll want to stall because they'll wanna open those up in mass phases. So to... In order to do that, we're requesting a spending approval of $74,250 to purchase 300 water meters and water meter antennas. The amount will be budgeted in water reserve, collection and transmission. Balance is $146,313, I believe. It will receive a transfer of $25,000 by years end. Any questions? Comments?
I think it's a great idea. Lots of savings, do you know?
We really don't save any money buying them in bulk. We just have the peace of mind to know that when we need those meters, we're gonna have them. And, Ian, the supply chain's been weird in 20 at a time. We actually had a vendor order meters from... That we'd used from the beginning, use a Camstrip, ordered them in July. And when I ordered, they danced around, acted kinda funny with their response. Didn't receive them, didn't receive them. So finally, I called them back and they lost their Camstrip distributorship. So I scrambled. That was on Friday. By Monday at noon, I had a new distributorship with a big company out of Kansas City Area's borderline. They have 3,000 meters sitting on their shelf right now from Camstrip. So they're going to be a better, long-term supplier. When we did go with them, their meters actually are $20 a meter cheaper than the other person for the same exact meter, too. So it was a win-win.
Do they deliver them for free?
I will tell you this, when we were scrambling for those 20 meters when that other company didn't, that guy hopped in his pickup on Monday morning when I first talked to him, drove 20 meters down there. Straight down all the way from Lewisburg, Kansas, so...
He drove 20 meters?
20 meters. Gotta have them.
We got some space to store them?
I'm saying it. We do. We do. We'll put them in the salvage shop. We've got some shelving there where we store water parts and water meters and things like that. So if there are no additional questions, it is recommended that the City Council approve the purchase of 300 water meters and water meter antennas in the amount of $74,250.
So you're gonna try to keep the inventory of like 300 at all times?
Well, we're gonna... We'll probably ebb and flow a little bit within about 40 meters, is what I'm guessing. We're gonna try to keep a pretty large inventory, so long as the building permits are coming in. Now, if the building permits slow down, we'll use some of our stockpile. And if they continue to roll in like they are, we will keep a large stock, so we make sure we have the meters for new construction.
When we install a permit for water, we get, what, $1,000 for that?
The tap fee is...
No, it's actually... So residentially, we get $1,500 for water, $1,500 for sewer on a residential. And the equity fees, we get another $1,000 on top of that. So that's a total of $4,000 for a residential tap. For a commercial tap, it's $2,500 for sewer, $2,500 for water, so that's $5,000. And the equity fee on top of that is another $4,000, so it's $9,000 for a commercial.
So is any of that going to water reserve?
I believe that... Equity fees, yes.
All right, I take a motion to approve the purchase.
I'll make them.
I'll make the motion.
I have the motion approved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote.
Thank you, Council.
Item 87 is a backhoe purchase. Backhoe is an important tool used to repair and install utility infrastructure, repair streets, and we have many other daily uses we... Important uses we use that for. We had two functional backhoes, New Holland 5E, which was purchased in 2000, and a 2006 model New Holland B95, which was purchased and used in 2012. Council, remember that the 5E began having hydraulic issues in the fall of '21. We took it out of service. At the September meeting, City Council approved the sale of the 5E backhoe, and it is currently listed for auction. The New Holland B95, we've got over 7,000 hours on it, and it is still operational, but with those hours, kind of more frequent repairs. And there's... We're concerned that there's... It could have a major breakdown and we'd have to be without a backhoe. As such, we requested bids from three vendors, Wichita Tractor, Murphy Tractor, and Foley. Two of the... We received two responses. Criteria was pretty simple: 70 horsepower, similar diesel engine, extended boom reach, standard bucket availability, so buckets would switch around easily. We wanted a decent warranty and just standard creature comforts, nothing fancy. And we don't rode it far and we don't deal with extreme weather that much. One option that we asked for was a set of 48-inch forks that we could use in place of the front bucket to allow us to lift heavier stuff than our skid steer will lift. In the past, we've had to get either Noawok or another company coming out and help us move big, heavy stuff. So that'd be nice to have. Bids I received are below Wichita Tractor Company, which I believe the owners are local, aren't they? They're residents of Goddard. They bid a new New Holland B95 DTC, which is the tractor, the backhoe we currently have. Murphy Tractor bid a John Deere 310G. The best bid was the New Holland B95 DTC. You see, just under 110 for the backhoe. The optional forks are $6,500, and the extended warranty is $6,652 for a total of $1,22,807. If you notice, that is the same exact backhoe we already have. One of the reasons we chose that, not only was the price, is because it has an extended boom on it, which gives us about four feet additional reach on that boom, which allows us to park on pavement a lot of times and work out over people's lawns or to reach in areas that we otherwise couldn't get to, and minimize the amount of damage and afterward cleanup we'd have. So anyway, the option... Everything here I pretty much already said. The extended warranty provides a 60-month or 5,000 hours of use and covers all non-user-related parts failures with a $250 deductible. The plus for this machine also was they have an estimated delivery date of January 5, '23. Other delivery dates, they were thinking farther into the spring, maybe early summer. Maybe that's why Kat didn't even bid because they couldn't maybe get us a machine. I don't know. Picture of what it is, you've probably seen it running around town. Well, one similar, an old one like that running around. So to purchase this, we are expecting... We are requesting a spending approval of $122,807. That'd be to purchase a New Holland B95 DTC backhoe from Wichita Tractor. The amount to be charged to equipments, reserve funds, street admin, heavy equipment capital, current balance is $702,346, and there's $87,000 to be transferred in by end of year. Any questions?
Are we gonna give you money for the backhoe we already have?
We are gonna keep the B95. The 555E is being auctioned right now, so we will get something. We don't know until the auction closes. I think that works, which should be later this month. And it... It's hard to tell. Sometimes those bring pretty good money and sometimes they don't bring much. We sold a mower once that was worn out for $2,500, and a pickup for six. So you never can tell.
That F-150 brought six?
Well, not that one yet. That one's still for auction. One we sold about a year ago. And when I was gonna sell that twice, the guy didn't pick it up in 30 days.
Does anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion second. All favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote. Thank you, Council.
Honorable Mayor and City Council.
you can see the view of the Starbond site looking to the south-southeast. The hotel, the Hampton Inn there as it's progressing. This would be the Health Club, childcare facility. The convex roof here is the water park with this concave area being the auditorium, which this is the publicly financed portion, which is receiving the property tax abatement. And the remainder of the facility is not. And then, of course, the ball fields in the background complete with that parking there. You can see the second phase ball fields. Arbor Creek, looking back toward phase two to the west-southwest. Completing phase one. With phase two being this parcel here. You can see upridge construction. That's maple in the background. Cloverleaf. You see the progress. Sixteen homes of phase two and two new construction in phase three. Rustic Creeks continuing to plod along. And in this view, you can see the new homes abutting autumn blaze. The duplexes at Cedar and Main. With Cedar being on the left-hand side and Main on the right. A new storage facility here, which is in the background, you can see one ninety-ninth. And then Cedar would be back over here and the Taco Bell Pizza Hut would be over here. Kind of give you a visual, visual reference. And just showing, looking past the orshlands with the ground that recently sold. And Rustic Creek in the background. And you can see the council's previously approved storm shelter work. Of course, we start doing earthwork and we would receive over two inches of rain once it was completed before the sprinklers and sods were approved. There's going to need to be a little bit of rework there, but and maybe some additional topsoil brought in.
It could have been an awesome slide.
But don't go buy a power plant at that time.
And then you can see the splash pad here with the non-stiff, non-stick surface, the non-slip surface, sorry. And there'll be a darker colored blue for this outer ring here for the kids. An update on the R-cut. Final plan should be ready to go here within the next couple of weeks. We got the temporary construction easement secured here with Permeer. And the bid documents should be finalized here within the next couple of weeks as well. And city attorney Ryan Peck has let us know that there's a hearing for the condemnation for the ground on December fourteenth and it would be this parcel here. And this parcel here with this area already being owned by the city. And the hearing will essentially determine a finding that the city has the power to condemn and could also at that time appoint any appraisers. Did you have anything else to add, Ryan?
No, I mean, it's just the first hearing. And I don't, I don't know yet if there are any lawyers on the other side. We're still waiting for the full order for the hearing on that December fourteenth to be approved by the judge. Once it is, we'll send out a report of the interested parties that we know of. We'll publish in the newspaper at least two weeks in advance of the hearing and show up. Get the show on the road.
And then we got Christmas on Main Street, December fourth, which is a Sunday this year. The community meal on Thursday. November tenth. And of course, it's mitten tree time, so if you're interested in being a part of that, there's the link to the Lions Club for the packing party, the wrapping party. Micah will be presenting these items to the planning commission a week from today, which will be the Genesis Splash Pad Variance, Camp Bow Wow Site Plan, Maple Preliminary Plat and Strude Site Plan. Do you have any comments or anything to share on the agenda upcoming, Mike?
No, not really. I think all of it's going to be pretty straightforward. I'm pretty happy with the Strude being Walker Site Plan. I know a lot of council members were eager to see that since we sold the land, I believe in two thousand twenty, so they have finally come to a good design layout. And I believe it'll be, I think, I think it'll be a nice asset to Main Street.
Thank you. And then some upcoming agenda items. We'll obviously get the plat moved and we'll have the big arm petition and authorization resolutions. We'll also have a discussion on encroachment and annexation to safeguard against Wichita going to the north of us. And we'll have some additional discussions for meetings and administrative codes. Are there any questions for myself or staff at this time? If not, that completes our report. Thank you.
All right, Larry.
Well, tomorrow's a big day. Make sure everybody gets out and vote. It's reduced to vote. If you don't vote, you can't complain. Are you sure? That's all I have. Thank you, Larry, Mr. Mayor.
All righty. You're up.
Well, a hundred percent. Go vote. That's all we got.
Go vote. That's all we got. Ready to the words of words?
Man.
More wise than that.
You know, we have not met since Fall Fest. I think everybody did a good job. Fall Fest did look really nice. And I enjoyed one, so. Anyway, that's what I have to say.
Just to make sure the maintenance to round the back windows down before you start putting anything in.
Oh. Yeah, one last thing. With this new New Holland, you could do a better job shoveling if you could, you could use it also.
We'll definitely try.
Just now.
Definitely try. We, I thought we did a pretty good job shoveling, but I guess not.
My driveway.
How's our well situation doing?
Not, not bad. Everything is functioning properly. We did shut down four and five last week because we're bumping up on their total allotment. I have not heard anything from Ag yet back on the application to be put in. I'm guessing they're going to wait and see our numbers for twenty-two and they're going to go from there. We ran those wells up to the very edge of what we could get them to without going over. So I'm going to show them that we need that water and that we need those reopened. Hopefully, they'll look at our numbers this year and they'll, they'll do that, too. So that's, that's our, that's our goal on that.
They have still in disrepair?
No, everything's working well. Everything's working properly, so. We just have the fifty-four point nine eight million gallon max we can pump on wells four and five. And we are close to that, so we shut them off.
So I guess it's going to have to get our allotments up before they're putting four new divisions.
Definitely, we want, we'd like to have them opened up. Parma and I were talking even earlier today. We'd like to see about three hundred and sixty million total between all four wells allowed. It was interesting, in the third quarter of this year, we pumped fourteen point two million gallons more than we did in the third quarter of twenty-one. That's eighteen percent more water pumped. Now, to offset that, we only received a four and a half increase in influent into the wastewater treatment plant. So that shows that the bulk of that water went on lawns, which is fine, but we need to be prepared for that as we have more lawns and more dwellings.
In the past, we've had people alternate how, like the side of the rib can water.
Odds and evens, and we used to promote year-round conservation and encourage that. However, when Wichita went into their water crisis, we were erroneously and continually brought into, well, then, and this is the Wichita media saying, well, then, if you're why are you having water watches if you're not in a water crisis? Because we're trying to be prudent with the resources that we've been given, that's why. But, you know, it was like, and then we were always lumped into communities that are in crisis. So we, we decided at that point to stop that approach because of all of the metro areas, as it currently says, only the cities of Mays and Goddard are the people that aren't cross-connected and purchasing water from Wichita. Which, as we know, Wichita uses those water cells to essentially, in strategic areas, give those utilities away to the developers for essentially, you know, moving in the directions that they want to go. So.
I think part of this is on Wichita, part of it is about, from what I understand.
Part of Mays, the way I understand, part of Mays, it is and isn't, but they are pretty much just rebilling, right? They're not, there are, there's, because there's an area down there where literally the, the what would be the southwest corners, Mays, and the northeast corners, Wichita, with Mays being on the northeast and Wichita being on the southeast side. So there's like a cross in the intersection, so there's some small areas in Mays that actually receive water from the city of Wichita. Which at the one sixty-seventh was the approach we were taking until Wichita said, no, we'll just give it to you.
Well, a question I had also is, have you noticed the drawdown of the wells from that high pool?
The drawdowns are staying pretty steady and we just, just have made it all the equipment used to check those drawdowns to make sure they're accurate. They've been staying pretty steady, so our water levels are fine. We just need to be able, be able to pump more from Ag.
And in an emergency, Brooke knows he can call on the wells if need be. It's just.
Yeah, we would not let anyone go without water. We'd do it if we had to.
Getting to that level without crossing, is what our goal is.
Yeah, our, when the heat dropped off, our water demand almost dropped in half. And it was obvious, it went million gallons a day to half a million a day. And that's when people stopped watering their lawns, so.
And how are we coming to the water loss?
Water, our water loss fluctuates between about ten and fifteen percent. We try to say ten or below. When I mentioned fifteen percent to our water inspector from State of Kansas, she didn't, wasn't concerned. She thought that was actually low compared to other cities in Kansas.
But we're freaking out.
Yeah, and we, and we, and we do, we have a goal for ten percent less. We are noticing, we find daily with people trying to steal water to fill swimming pools. One of the companies knows they're stealing it every time they do, and every time I show up, they run to me and try to beg for forgiveness, act like they didn't know what they were doing. And with construction, you're going to have some, some folks that just don't think they may have Wichita meter and they hook it up to a, to a Goddard hydrant and they fill a truck and we don't know.
They're doing it right, but they're giving the money to Wichita. They're using our water.
Yeah, we, I've, I've come up, I've come across people for filling pools and/or trucks with a meter thinking they're doing it right, but they've got a Wichita meter. We struggle with that. We can't be everywhere all the time, but we do what we can to solve it.
The fire hydrant?
Fire hydrants aren't bad. We had a, we did do a water main repair. A coupler came loose between wells seven and eight. So we repaired that last week. We had three water main breaks in the third quarter. And it felt that, the heat and the dry, you know, ground, everything shifted around, so that's pretty standard. We've done over a hundred service line repairs this year, which is the first time we got over a hundred. So we're busy.
I imagine that the hallway you're helping in with perfecting our wells, but.
Well, I mean, we talked about it and, you know, the perfection process is by nature, you, you have to demonstrate the need. So it's, it's almost a continual process. I mean, even though, even though, you know, you continually want to push that, how much you kind of ask for out there, you know, to keep ahead of the demand. But then, on the other hand, you have to prove to the Ag people that you, you're going to use it. You just can't. But the nice thing about municipalities is that they, they will allow you because they know municipalities grow and so demand grows. So they need to keep that available for the cities to be able to acquire more water to serve their population group. Yes, it's a continual process.
It is, and that's why we ran four and five up to the very, very limit and then shut them off because we want to show them that we have that, that need.
I will say, though, I still don't quite understand because I know we, the permit we got most recent was like three hundred and twenty million gallon. I still don't quite understand why we're not allowed to pump that much, but I've.
Somehow, I did an owner record request and somehow, somehow in the year two thousand, they perfected those two wells and why I don't know.
Well, that's all I had, I guess. Just I'll take a motion to adjourn if nobody has anything else they'd like to bring.
All motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion for a second, any discussion? All favor I?
Aye.